Counselor, may I have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA Guidelines for Virtual Meeting, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. May I have a walkover?
For Monday, November 2nd, 2020, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan, Dr. Campbell is absent this evening, Mr. Riker, Mr. Jess Wiki is absent this evening, Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Riccardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
... Wonderful. See, I have a motion for the payment of documents for this evening, November 2nd, 2020. So, back in favor? A total of minutes for October 19th, 2020, regular meeting. Anyone have any comments, questions, problems with them? No? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Engineering and planning matters.
I'm going to let Mr. Chairman.
Nothing really big. Thank you so much. I want to tell them that it's a dream on this evening. It's like, you know, my buddy took his medicine the other day with a jet loss. I'll be taking my medicine tonight.
That's right.
We have two resolutions ready for this evening. Lot 19403, lots 2, 6, 7, 10, 12, 19, 20, and 30, RG2 Associates. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to be brief, to follow along the same lines. Resolution 2020-19 related to the lots and block in question memorializes the third one-year time extension for the applicant.
May I have a motion? Second. Local. Yes. 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 Thank you all. And next up, we have Block 19403, Lot 6, RG2 Associates LLC. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, following up, because it is the same applicant, as related just to Lot 6 and what will be future lots 24 through 27, this resolution memorializes preliminary major site plan approval and carries final approval for Lot 6 and those future lots. What that did is it eliminated four single-family lots from Phase 2 of the originally approved project and replaces them with the 36 affordable housing units pursuant to the municipality's affordable housing plan.
Thank you. Is anyone here to make a motion? Anybody?
Mr. Dolan? Mr. Riker? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay. Interesting schedule. We don't have any changes, but I'd like to bring your attention to, everybody should have a copy of a proposed 2021 schedule of meetings. My thoughts, January 11th, we're having our pre-year meeting, and the 25th, I'm not sure if that's necessary. Maybe it will be, because there will only be one meeting in February. But they're being so close together, I don't know how you guys feel about that. Anyone feel it's necessary? All right, so you want to keep the 25th then?
Mr. Chairman, I think Denise wants to say.
Yes.
I was wondering, I just want you to know that January 11th and the 25th, that's on the 2nd and the 4th Mondays, so I don't know if the professionals are available on those days. So it's just something to think about.
That is a good answer.
Okay. So, we're going to keep the 2, January 11th and 25th. Does anybody else, do we have a giant schedule for next year to compare? Okay. Not on Mondays, okay? Everybody okay with this schedule? Do we need to vote on this now to adopt it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think that this way is of record.
Anyone care to make a motion to approve 2021 meetings of the Jackson Planning Board of January 11th, 25th, February 1st, March 1st, and 15th, April 5th and 19th, May 3rd and 17th, June 7th and 21st, July 19th, August 2nd and 16th, September 20th, October 4th and 18th, November 1st and 15th, and December 6th and 20th. Is everybody okay? Can I get a motion, please? And walkover.
Mr. Dolan? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
My question's up on December 31st.
You can vote on me on this.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay. Moving along, we have our first application of this evening, that is Lot 42013, Cedar Swamp Closet. They have asked to be carried to our February 1st meeting, so I need a motion to carry that.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right. Okay. Next, we have Lot 22010, Lots 2 and 6, per holdings. We'll go to our professionals first. Doug, lead off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation of an application. We last heard testimony on October 19th. The project involves construction of a 12,000-square-foot warehouse and office and manufacturing building, as well as a 1,200-square-foot storage garage. I think at the last meeting, the applicant was requested to look at the extent of landscaping, or lack thereof, on the project, and maybe provide some additional green area. There was also a question, I believe, from Mr. Fleming regarding the slope of the driveway from the existing development, access through Faraday Avenue to the rear portion of the site, which is the subject of the application. And the applicant has submitted revised plans, so some testimony from the applicant regarding the revisions that have been incorporated into the project. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Peter?
Not much to add with what Doug had introduced. They've removed some waiver requests as it relates to buffers and landscaping. They still have the variances for the proposed accessory building and the existing building in Phase 1, and our office prepared an updated letter dated October 27th of this year. We'd ask the applicant to address that in testimony as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, turn around, the applicant. As the board recalls and as your professionals indicated, we did submit on October 23rd, I revised some minor tweaks to the property. We were able to, I know when we were here, we had discussed, and I'm just going to reference to the pictures that were brought up on the board, we had discussed possibly removing the center parking, where there were two trees, and we ended up, when we went back, it was a better plan, we were able to remove the buffer waiver requirements that we had asked for from the rear and from the right side of the building. So we did, I don't want anybody to think that we didn't listen to you, but when we went back and actually looked at it and took a step back, it made more sense to remove that, move the parking, but from the right side and made a little bit of the rear side of the parking, to go ahead and comply with, no longer asking for those waivers. Additionally, we reduced the impervious coverage again, even though we were below the 75% maximum. Last time, we again further reduced that number. We've added landscaping to the project within the buffers. We also added landscaped islands. As you can see, the islands are shown on that exhibit, and Mr. Gartner, I'll have Mr. Stevens give technical testimony, but I will just ask that this be added to our exhibits. I think that's A3, if I'm correct.
That's fine. A3 with today's date.
With today's, yes. And this is the rendering of the site with these changes.
And when someone testifies, you'll just proper who?
Yes.
Who created it?
Additionally, in the letter, we had addressed, there was a question regarding the fire truck access to the site. Mr. McFarland had testified that the trucks could get in and out, but we did provide additional justification for that with some calculations. If I can at this time, ask Mr. Bill Stevens to come up, we'll swear him as a professional, and he'll confirm what I've been stating.
Mr. Stevens, if you'd kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you're, please give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and depending on the chairman, how much information to qualify yourself.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Gartner. My name is William Stevens, S.T.E.V.E.N.S. I am the Vice President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey. I am a professional engineer and a professional planner licensed to practice here in the state of New Jersey. I've been appearing in that capacity in front of this board for many decades. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you.
Mr. Stevens, if you can, if you can just walk us through the October 23rd recent middle that I've been referencing, and if you can also walk us through the photo that's on the screen. And Mr. Gartner, I looked at my notes, I only have A1, so I'll ask that this be marked as A2. I apologize about that.
I had to, I had to, so I would...
Oh, you had to? So A3 is fine.
A3 with today's date.
So, as Mr. Pfeffer had stated in his opening remarks, my firm took the comments from this board seriously, and we went back and we made revisions to this plan to try to take care of some of the concerns that were raised by the board at the last hearing. The first one of those was, we were previously requesting waivers from providing landscape buffers along the project perimeter, so the plans have been revised so that we now do provide the required 10-foot buffers on both the side and the rear of the proposed development. One of the other comments was that the board felt we were simply had too much parking on the site, so we did go through and make some revisions to the parking. We removed 19 parking spaces from the Phase 2 portion of this plan. There is a bank of 17 parking stalls located furthest away from the development that have been removed, and there were two other parking stalls that were removed along what's shown as the close edge of the rendering to you, to add landscape islands, as well as we added landscape islands in the center of the parking area where we used to simply have painted parking islands there. So they are now curb landscaped and provided additional green space for the project.
So, Mr. Stevens, I apologize, we talked about doing this, but you didn't yet. Did you prepare this rendering or your office?
I did not, no. This rendering was prepared by the applicant, by one of his architectural professionals.
You've had the opportunity to review it?
I have, yes.
And it matches up with the revised engineering plans?
And generally, it does, with one exception. The plan still shows the parking that was previously proposed in the rear, and that has now been removed. So those 17 stalls are removed in our plan and provided with green space to meet the buffer requirements. That's the only thing that I can see that's wrong with this rendering, and it's important for the board to recognize that this is an architectural picture of what the project could look like when it was developed. It's not meant to be an engineering drawing, it's meant to give the board an idea of what the project would look like.
Could or would?
Will?
Will, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Pfeffer also stated in his opening remarks, we did reduce the impervious coverage of the proposed project. We are allowed to have 75% impervious coverage. Currently, we're proposing 71, whereas the prior plan was at 71.3. So we did make a reduction in the impervious coverage for the site, and it's also important for the board to understand that when we get finished with this project, this Phase 2 and Phase 1 are going to be combined. So this is one project. The lots are going to be combined, so we are looking at one piece of ground, one project. This is not two properties or two projects. And I guess the last thing to discuss was, there was some talk about access by fire equipment from one site to the other. If we were looking again at the rendering that was prepared by the architect, what the concern was, was discussed, was this driveway between Phase 1, which is located in the lower right corner of the drawing that we're looking at, and Phase 2 located at the top, this driveway. So that driveway is a little over 9% in slope, so it's not the slope that would give anyone any concern. Residential streets here in the state of New Jersey are allowed to be designed up to 16%, and highways are designed at much more than that, so there's no problem with the fire truck navigating the slope of that. When we talk about something, let's just use a 10% slope as an easy thing to understand, what that means is one foot in 10 feet. So we're not talking about Mount Everest here, it's a 9-point-something percent slope. But what we do have to look at, what firemen and fire trucks worry about when they see transitions like this, is what they call hangups, where a truck going over from one place to another could get hung up on the transition in the grade. So it's not the slope itself that's a problem, that's not a problem for the fire truck. It's transitions that we have to look at. And then, what we found in looking at fire department data and through the ITE, the Transportation Institute also, was that you couldn't have more than a 6% transition that would be a good, you know, thought of a good design for a vehicle that has a 9-inch clearance. We believe the fire trucks here in town have 10 inches of clearance, and we have designed this driveway so that it meets the requirements, so that the fire truck will be able to pass from one way to another without having any hangups. So we have presented that in the drawings, and I'm giving that here as testimony as well this evening.
I mean, what's that? I want to make sure that's part of any resolution. What's the transition number again?
6%, no more than 6%.
Thank you.
Do you think that, if you're a visitor or... It's not just a separate, you are a fellow, and it's common that you are new to 2024, and they can turn. But not only, I'm never going to have all axle on the truck on any one end at one point. I mean, one axle, one axle, and order from the rear axle, and when I have one axle on the rear axle on the end line, I'm starting to turn. I might have 24 feet on a 45-foot truck. Not with the truck, and it's not a lot of clearance. I'm actually seeing, of the message, how it pulls me to that truck stop, to get around that building.
Well, we've done both, Mr. Fleming. We provided the circulation drawings, it can be done.
I'm a lot, I'm a lot, if you live that close, I'm a lot of driving, I'm a lot of can make it. I mean, put your own circulation, or if you don't, you don't have to park. A... Hot. Somebody's working, somebody's driving, I'm a lot of turn. I mean, I don't have full access to my lane, but it's a question that my current radius is not high. On the lower second, you may have good business, those, those are all filled. I need to build with the header. So again, a 19-inch truck on both sides of an axis, you're cutting my radius down to 40.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Mr. Fleming, I do see your concerns. It is tight to bring the truck around here, but the diagrams do show that it will fit. My understanding of your concerns from the last hearing really talked about the slope of this driveway, and that's honestly what we were prepared to discuss and what we have added to our drawings to show that it does meet the requirements that the truck can transit that slope without having any hangups. As far as widening out some of these drive aisles so that they would function better, I mean, it could be done. I mean, we could increase the radiuses coming into this site, for example, to provide for additional turning clearances for the truck.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
So if we were to, we're saying the same thing. If we were to take these radiuses and just make them bigger, so to give you a more direct drive into either aisle, we could absolutely clean up and make the transition from one place to another better. It might end up increasing the impervious coverage a little more than what we had talked about, certainly will still meet the ordinance requirement, wouldn't require any kind of variance. We could do that, we could make it better. I agree.
Do you agree with what's happening?
You have to use a mic, Doug.
I increase the radius. Yes, and we had this drawing that shows the... So, this drawing looks a little different than what's on here on the record. If you're agreeing with these modifications.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see the final product or the plan with the increased radiuses that you just mentioned, but you know, conceptually wise, yeah, I think it would work.
Do you do the same thing with the RC access? That's only a blow with... And, um, E-mound, and... It's like an access base on that, on this 40°.
Yes, you are, Mr. Fleming. We could absolutely make that wider, if you would like to see that, say, let's just, let's put a number to, let's say, 18 feet, which is what we would normally use for an emergency vehicle lane, and I know there was also some discussion, I think, at the last hearing about it being gravel. We'll just pave, we'll make it a paved thing with a breakaway chain, so that it'll be limited to emergency vehicle access only.
Can, Mr. Chairman, can you better, if you don't mind, can you just better describe, again, I'm trying to make sure I understand for the resolution purposes?
So, there's an emergency gravel access off of the lower left-hand corner of the site that goes to Sea Meadow, which is just off of this page here. So what Mr. Fleming is asking us to do is, since this is only 12 feet wide, he thinks it could be difficult to negotiate with an emergency vehicle during an emergency. So what I said was, let's do this, we'll make it 18 feet wide, so that there is plenty of room for us to be able to negotiate that, and rather than leaving it as gravel, we'll pave it on our property. So there won't be any issues. And then, just so, now that it's paved and it's an entrance out there, so that people don't use it, we'll put up breakaway chains, which is something we would normally do for emergency access here at Jackson Township.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Correct, it ties into the end of Edison, that is correct. Yes, thank you.
When you make those changes, you have got landscaping set up here now. You just move the existing landscaping out of the way of the changes in the road sides, but keep that relatively same.
Yes, what we'll do when we increase the radiuses, we'll move the landscaping to allow for that to happen.
Sure.
Yes, we'll just simply relocate the landscaping to make it fit the new curb pattern.
Okay, with a similar design?
Yes, but with a similar design.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Okay, now we're looking at Phase 1, Phase 2, and the 45.
Yes, that's correct.
These staff have a lot we have to promote on Phase 1, and your partner stated that he's...
It is vacated, yes. Portions of it are vacated. So the portion from Faraday to Phase 2 is vacated, the portion along Phase 2 is not vacated.
That's what I mentioned, Phase 1. After the meeting, I went out and looked at the street, and it was making progress. It's all up and down, it's all against the... And I don't see that on that plan, that that's part of the project, and I'm wondering how it got to that point, when you told us the name of the court was vacated, and the next day it was under construction. How do we get to that?
So, I believe the section of the road that you're talking about is the neighbor's property. It's a private road owned by the neighbor. When this applicant was putting in, repairing the retaining wall, some of that road got destroyed during the construction, and they put it back to where it was. They didn't, there was always stone there, and they put stone back.
There's a lot of work to make that up, and it doesn't... But I had a conversation with the home, the property, so how do we go from vacating to improving it the next day, and then parking vehicles from that site on that surface? How do we get to...
You don't, Mr. Pfeffer, instead of you making the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, again, instead of you making, hang on, before you say yes to me, you better know what I'm saying to you. Instead of making the representations, why don't we have your client testify? He can ask questions as to the status of Phase 1, answer questions as to the vacation, and then you're not stuck making representations. We get it straight from the applicant's mouth. Want to, if I may, if you want a minute or two, obviously, to talk to him, that's fine.
We have the applicant's warning?
Yep. Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you can first speak up, it's difficult through the ma... Okay, thank you. Can you kind of give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation with the applicant?
My name is Strahl Mayer-Berkowitz, B-E-R-K-O-W-I-T-Z, and I'm the owner of the property, of the Faraday property.
So, Mr. Berkowitz, you heard the questions, you heard my answer. If you can, please clarify anything.
So, the vacation of the Sea Meadow section up till Edison, I purchased the property roughly four years ago after it was already vacated. That road was existing when I bought the property, going from Faraday all the way till Sea Meadow, turning out to Sea Meadow. When we built the retaining wall along the vacated Sea Meadow strip, part of it is above ground, part of it is below with the grating over there, so they dug up a lot of the Sea Meadow section to build this retaining wall. When they put the dirt back, it was all dirty and disgusting, so I did clean it up for the neighbors, I put stone back there, and we put...